There's a folder right there, Your Honor, a beautiful one.
All right, okay.
One of our produce.
All right. Counselor, you may proceed.
May I please, the Court? Could you please state your name for the record?
My name is Kathleen Ora Peza.
And where do you live?
I live in Orlando, Florida.
How long have you lived in -- is that Orange County?
Yes.
How long have you lived in Orange County?
Um, most of my life.
Okay. What is Fund Education Now?
Fund Education Now is a nonpartisan, citizen-driven, public education advocacy group.
And what is your position in that organization?
I'm president of the group.
And who were the other founders with you?
Christine Vermucci and Linda Covert.
And what is the purpose of the Fund Education Now?
The purpose is to talk about the things that are happening with education reform and to our public schools and inspire other parents and other citizens to learn more and learn to take action on behalf of public education.
Do you have children in the public school system?
Yes, I have two.
And could you please share with the Court what grades they're in?
They're in fifth grade and 10th grade.
Is FIN -- I'm gonna use that, is that all right to use that acronym?
Yes.
Is FIN a subscriber organization?
Yes, it is.
And having a child in 10th grade and a child in 5th grade, could you share with the Court any differences that you've seen in their education over the years?
Yes, there's been a big change between what I witnessed with my 10th grader coming up from kindergarten all the way through his present 10th grade status and my 5th grader. The, for example, my 5th grader took 25 pages of bubbling in exercises home every day, every week in kindergarten.
I'm sorry, took home what?
25 pages of bubbling in exercises that he needed to complete in order to learn how to bubble in for standardized testing. And this was not the case with my 10th grader. There has been a narrowing of the curriculum with my 5th grader that I did not see with my 10th grader. For example, social studies in 4th grade was reduced to a two-page flyer, basically, from scholastic education. It was very distressing to see that everything was really vectored towards learning English Language Arts and math.
What does Fund Education Now do?
What we do is we, like I said, we educate people, we inform moms and dads, regular citizens, voters about what this legislation and what the status of public education is in Florida. And we ask them to be informed and take action and spread the word and do what they can to try to inform others.
If you would, take a look at Exhibit 35-35. And can you identify for the Court what this document is? Is this the bylaws and articles of incorporation?
Yes, yeah, they're for Fund Education Now. That's exactly what it is, it's the bylaws.
And take a look, if you would, at Exhibit 15-15.
Okay.
And are these the annual reports that are filed by Fund Education Now with the Secretary of State of Florida?
Yes, that's exactly what this is.
And Fund Education Now is an active groups as you sit there today?
Yes.
Are you the president? As an organization, what are some of FIN's major concerns with the public education
We're very concerned with the fact that it doesn't appear that the language and the Constitution is being followed. The high-quality, safe, secure, efficient language found in Article 9, Section 1.
And why is that?
When we take a hard look at what's happening in the schools and we look at, you know, from my own experience with my kids, you know, there is a lot of money that's spent on testing, a focus on high-stakes testing, there is a lot of evidence that the kids are under a lot of stress from the situation, and so that's, you know...
And how do you, as the president of FIN, interpret high-stakes testing? What's your understanding of it?
Well, high-stakes testing is one test, one day, sort of dictating the outcome for a child for sometimes their life. You know, we object to the mandatory third-grade retention, we object to the way the tests are used, they're used to punish teachers because they're used, they're attached to their evaluations, the test scores are, so we're opposed to that, we're opposed to the way schools get extra money if they do well and don't get extra money ironically if they don't do well. And we just really feel that, you know, these tests should be a diagnostic tool that are helpful. At this point, there's no benefit to these tests for a parent, we don't really know, you know...
You don't get to see the tests?
No, we don't get to see the tests, the teachers are barred from seeing the tests, the children, in fact, have to sign an oath saying that they will not show the test or discuss the test with anybody, including their parents, driving a wedge between the parent and the child. But furthermore, as a parent, if you can't see the test, you get a very vague explanation from the state of what your child's score is, and you don't get a score until well after the next school year starts or sometime in the summer, it ceases to have any true benefit to anybody.
I gotta hear this again. Your child has to take an oath that they won't discuss the test with the parents?
Yes, sir.
Is it the question, or what is it that they won't discuss?
The entire test process, like, if you ask your child what the writing prompt was, they say, "I am not allowed to tell you." And they're scared.
Saying what?
They're scared.
Does Fund Education Now have any concerns about school grades?
Yes.
And the grades of schools?
Yes, we don't feel that they are helpful, we feel like they are more of a driver for, you know, dictating economics. We've never seen an F school in an affluent neighborhood, you know, and for all the talk about...
I'm sorry, would you say that again, you've never seen...
We've never seen an F school in an affluent neighborhood. So with all the talk about not wanting to bind children to zip codes, it's ironic that this A-to-F school grading scheme is entirely attached to zip codes.
And do you have any concerns about the impact of charters and vouchers on public education?
Yes, we have a lot of concerns, especially about the charters. They are diverting desperately needed funds away from district schools, and they're funding schools that are no better than the schools that they're diverting the funds from. You know, they are basically, what's happened is there are, there's a system of uneven and unfair different systems of public education, publicly funded education, that's been created, which all serves to denigrate the district schools.
Referring to inadequate funding, what concerns or examples can you share with the Court relative to the inadequate funding by the state of the education system?
Your Honor, I'm sorry, some of this is a little bit leading, perhaps, these questions.
I don't think that, I said what?
I can't read the question back. What was...
I don't think it was leading, but I'd be glad to rephrase, Your Honor. Do you, as the president, and does FIN, have any concerns about the funding of the public school system by the state?
Yes.
And can you give the, share with the Court any examples you might give relative to those concerns?
Yes. Fund Education Now got its start in 2009 because there was a drastic defunding of public education going on. In Orange County, we were facing a $244 million cut to our budget, which was meaning that there would be no safe officers, there would be no music, no art, guidance counselors were on the line. And so this was very disturbing to us because we were still paying our property taxes and, you know, we couldn't understand why this was happening and that we were helpless, basically, to do something about it. So as we moved through our learning process and understanding about the funding, we realized that this was the case every year, that there was a defunding going into effect when it came to traditional public district schools. Laws were passed that often were unfunded, so districts would have...
Can you give an example?
Well, SB 736, which was the big bill that tied teacher evaluations, teachers' test scores to testing, you know, all of the teacher training that came with, and the course exams and all those things that were in that giant bill, none of it came with funding.
And have you seen any impact of funding on kids in poverty in Orange County or the state?
Your Honor, there's really no foundation for this witness to speak to that issue.
I disagree, objected to.
Go ahead.
I think that there is good evidence that the, there's been an effort to ignore the effects of poverty on school kids.
What do you mean?
The idea of doing less with more, or more with less funding is endemic. So you have a system that is defunded on a regular basis every year, and, you know, you're looking at schools that have great need and they need to have supports, they need to have services that children with, or little with challenges need, and there literally is no money for that.
Does Orange County have a sales tax referendum or a millage referendum?
Yes.
Which one?
We have both.
Okay, can you explain to the Court what exactly those referendums bring? Not the amount, but what are they?
Well, one is for capital, so for buildings, because the state has repeatedly underfunded the public schools and given PICO money to charter schools. And so the state, so then districts are forced to raise their own capital outlay money through the penny sales taxes.
So that you have a penny sales tax in Orange County for capital?
Right.
And what else?
Then we raise millage money to make up what the districts are required to do, which is required local effort. When the state years ago was participating in a more investing mode, you know, they spent probably 60% of general revenue funding public education, and the required local effort was about 40%. That number's basically blocked, foot-blocked or whatever, and now the required local effort is greater than what the state contributes.
In relationship to operating, is there another millage in Orange County for operating the system beside the sales tax?
Not that I know of.
Okay, there's no millage referendum?
Well, we did, we have, we have had both, we have a millage referendum and we have a penny sales tax.
And how much...
That was voted again.
How much is the millage?
I think it's a half, but I'm positive.
And that's paid by the property tax owner in Orange County?
Yeah, taxpayers pay for all of this. So in a way, it's an additional tax on our property or our services, you know, to supplement.
Oh, yes. Could you please bring up, you've done it already, 2139? Page 63618, or is that the Bates number, 63618? And can you see that, Mrs. Ora Peza?
Yes, I can.
And could you please read the line after the test?
After the test, "You may not reveal details about the test items or passages to anyone."
And this is, has to be signed by your children?
Yes, by third graders.
I'm presuming it's in the testing rules ahead because this just says, I understand the testing rules that were just read to me. If I do not follow these rules, my test score may be invalidated. Now sign your name, line back to the signature to just, Kate, you understand the testing rules. Presuming in the testing rules there is... Yes, after the test, "You may not reveal details about test items or passage, passages
I have no further questions.
Good morning, Ms. Ora Peza, how are you? My name's Rocco Testani, I'm one of the attorneys representing the defendants. Starting off a little bit with your background, you've never worked at a public school or a charter school in Florida, is that correct?
No.
And you have no firsthand knowledge about the quality of education in any school district outside of Orange County, is that right?
No.
And as I understand, Fund Education Now has not done any studies or reports on the quality of education in Florida?
No.
And no studies or reports on the funding of education in Florida? And I believe that your children attend, have attended two particular schools in Orange County, is that right?
Yes.
Blankner K-8 School and Boone High School?
Yes.
And both of those schools are graded A schools, is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
And I saw some information the other night that it looks like in Boone High School, the graduation rate is over 90%.
I don't know that.
I may approach her.
You may.
What did you give it now?
And Ms. Ora Peza, if we can direct your attention, these are some excerpts from 5292, and I'm going to be focused on, you'll see the paging at the bottom, it's page 49 of 75. And towards the top of the page, it's the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5th line down is the Boone High School line. And you see, one of the columns that's reported in this department report is the graduation rate 2013-14, and it's the sixth column over. Do you see that?
Yes.
And it reports a 91% graduation rate?
Yes.
And of course, we see the A grade there as well for the high school, is that correct? And on the next page is Blankner, that's page 50 of 75, and it's a little more than halfway down on that page, and we see in that school again, the A grade for Blankner. Have you been able to find that line? And you've had no criticism of the quality of the teaching that your children have received in Orange County, have you?
No.
And you're not aware of any teacher shortages in Orange County?
Yes.
You are aware of teacher shortages?
Yes.
Okay. And is that something that you've become aware of recently?
No.
You probably gave a deposition in this case?
Yes.
Rob, may I approach? Page and line count.
Page 87 of your deposition, line 21 to 23. And at that time, Ms. Ora Peza, you were under oath in your deposition, is that right?
Yes, I was.
And the question was asked at the time, are you aware of any shortages of teachers in the Orange County schools, and your answer was no?
Yes.
Okay, was that true at the time?
It's true at the time, but things have changed.
Okay. When was that deposition taken?
January of 2014. So as of January 2014, you were unaware of any shortages?
Correct.
Now, you've talked about a narrowing of the curriculum, I think, in the schools, and I just wanted to ask you about a couple things in Orange County schools. I'm assuming now that you've got a high school student, you are familiar with the curricular offerings at Boone High School?
Yes.
And you are aware that at Boone High School, they have a full complement of advanced placement courses?
Yes.
Okay. And that includes in, for example, advanced placement calculus they have, you're aware of that?
Yes.
They have advanced placement chemistry at that school?
Yes.
Do they even have advanced placement micro and macroeconomics at that school?
I'm not aware of that.
Okay. Does your son participate in any of the advanced placement yet?
Yes.
Are you aware that there's an honors anthropology course offered in the high school?
No.
And with respect to foreign languages, there's advanced placement French and Spanish?
Yes.
And American Sign Language as well is offered?
Yes.
In the sort of music and performing arts, there's an orchestra honors class offered there, band honors class offered there?
Yes.
Jazz ensemble honors class offered there?
Yes.
So there's a wide range of offerings at the high school? And with respect to the counseling staff at the high school, you're aware there's seven counselors that work there?
Yes, and there really are not enough counselors there. There are 3,000, over 3,000 students there, and it is rather difficult to have, you know, a significant relationship with those counselors.
Okay, so there's seven counselors in place at the high school, to your knowledge?
I don't know that there's seven, I'm only familiar with five.
Okay. And there's career pathways and college coordinators that work in the high school as well?
I'm only familiar with one person for 3,200 kids.
Do you know Mrs. Emery, Mr. Fulford, Mrs. Collin that work in that position? Do you know those people?
The only person I know is Mrs. Collin.
Okay, you don't know about Mrs. Emery or what Mrs. Fulford does?
No.
Okay. You know that there's an ESOL compliance specialist at the high school?
No.
School nurse?
Yes.
And you've never had any concerns about safety or security at Blankner or Boone High School for your students?
Well, there was a period of time where at Blankner, Blankner is a K-8, so it has kindergarten through middle school population. And there was a period of time where we could not fund safe officers, we still don't fund safe officers for the middle school portion of Blankner, and we don't fund it for the elementary school either. Those are usually critical component people in a middle school. There was also, we've had erratic situations where we have not had school resource officers on campus due to funding, where they've had to split their time among many different schools. So, you know, there is a concern about safety from that standpoint, and the same would go for Boone as well, you know, so it's been a...
If we can turn to your deposition, Ms. Ora Peza, on page 57, line 23, over to the top of page 58. On page 57, line 23, I asked, have you any concerns about the safety of the school buildings that your, well, the school building, I guess, your children have attended in Orange County, and your answer was no?
That was the building.
Okay, that's the, I'm sorry, that's Blankner.
At the time of this deposition, that was Blankner.
Okay, and that's the K-8 school you talked about where there's no resource officer?
Correct.
Okay, and your testimony was you had no concerns about security, safety of that building at that time?
Of the physical building.
Okay. And then I went on to ask, what about the security of the school building that your children have attended, have you any concerns about that? Your answer was no, on page 58, lines 1 through 6.
Yes, and I think that this probably, this deposition probably coincided with the time when we were seeing the elimination of these different positions.
Okay, well, let's talk a little bit about the funding situation in Orange County for It's Exhibit 1029. May I approach her? Ms. Ora Peza, I've handed you Exhibit 1029 in this case, which is the Orange County Public Schools adopted budget for the 2014-15 school year. This would have been the school year that, I guess, followed the deposition that occurred in January of 2014, is that right?
No, this would be the school year, this would be, oh, yes, you're right.
So this would have been like August of 2014?
Okay.
To the end of 2015?
Yes, you're correct.
And I wanted to direct your attention to, I'm not sure if the pages are numbered, but a number of pages into the document, it's probably five or six pages in, and there's a Table 2 that's got total operating revenue sources, 2014-15 fiscal year.
Are you talking about the proposed operating budget?
No, I'm talking about the total operating revenue sources on the adopted summary budget.
What's your Bates number?
21114 is the Bates number. Are you on that page?
Not 21104, instead of recommended resolution. 21114, 21114, we're a hundred pages away from where I am, so my apologies.
Ms. Ora Peza, are you seeing the same page as is on the screen?
Yes.
All right, so what I wanted to ask you about here was, this shows operating revenue available in the Orange County schools over a four-year period, do you see that?
Yes.
And in looking at this breakdown... And in looking at this breakdown, you see that the budget, revenue budget for Orange County increased, just looking at the bottom line, well, the total revenue increased by a couple hundred million dollars between 1112 and 1415, is that right?
Yes.
And you see the state revenue sources increased from 633 million in fiscal year 11 and 12 to 776 million by fiscal 1415?
Yes.
So that was over 140 million dollars of that increase was attributable to state sources, is that true?
It appears that way.
Okay. And you can see that the state sources revenue actually exceeded the growth in the local revenue, do you see that?
Yes, and that was new, a new development.
All right. And you see that, in fact, between 1112 and 1213, the state revenues had gone up 50 million dollars and the local revenues had actually declined between those two years.
Tell me the two years you just said.
1112 and 1213, the first two columns.
Okay.
But in what I'm showing to you, in every year displayed in this four-year period, state revenues have gone up, is that correct?
Yeah, but this is relative.
Well, we'll talk about relative on the next page. But this one shows state revenues going up each year.
Yes.
By considerable amount of money.
No.
You don't think 140 million dollars is considerable?
Not in the big picture.
Okay. Well, let's talk about relative then, on the next page, which is 2115. And this is doing it on a revenue source per student basis. And you can again see that the state, the total revenue line, which is kind of the middle part of that table, increased by, looks like, almost $400 a student between 1112 and 1415?
Yes.
Actually, it's more than that, it's more like $650, I'm sorry, I got that wrong, between 6754 and 7411. Over $650 increase in that four-year period on a per-student basis, is that what this shows?
Yes.
And again, on the state sources side, we saw earlier in the prior page, the 140 million plus increase, that translated into a per-student increase of, oh, it looks like 500 and almost $70 per student from state sources?
Yes.
Okay. So during the last four years that we see here, there have been significant increases in the per-student funding as well as in an absolute dollar amount, haven't there?
No.
Okay, so you don't think a 15% increase in school funding over four years is significant?
No, because they don't reflect the funding high that occurred in 2007. So what you have is the net effect of standing still, and you don't take into account all the hundreds of thousands of new students that have arrived to public education. You have, if you look at the 2007 funding amount, and you actually aggregate that over the years that, you know, we're talking about, it's like a, you know, minor six or eight-dollar increase per year.
Okay. Ms. Oropesha, I'd like you to focus on...
It does not restore you to any kind of funding high.
I didn't ask you about restoration?
But you asked me if this was a big increase, and it isn't. It is a clawback trying to get to where they used to be.
All right. If you could focus on the years I've presented to you?
I am.
I know you'd like to talk about another, something else, but in the four years shown here, which is the most recent four years we have, there have been significant funding increases, haven't there?
They are not, they're like making up the loss. You cannot call this a funding increase in the truest sense. You're making up a loss that doesn't take into account inflation or new students, and you're still not whole.
And you haven't studied, the FEN has not studied the funding situation in Florida, you've already said that?
We've not done studies, but we certainly have educated ourselves about it, and there's plenty of material out there to do that, it's all public record.
Okay, thank you. In terms of your statement earlier in your testimony about, I think you said that the local community there in Orange County funds 60% of the schools, is that what you said, about 60%?
That was where, no.
I thought you said...
I said that the RLE has been, it's been like mission creep, it's slowly increasing in terms of what the districts are responsible for. RLE is required local effort.
I'm aware of that, but I'm trying to understand, I thought you said 60%?
At one time during this period, it was approaching on 60% with the legislature spending less, yes.
So your testimony is at one time, Orange County was spending 60% of the total spend, and the state was contributing 40%?
I'm talking, for the 60%, I'm talking as a state average.
Okay, what about Orange County?
I'm not sure exactly what that number is, but it has been upside down if you go historically and look, you know?
Well, let's take a look at where it is now.
Okay.
Which is what we're here to talk about, 2117. On that same exhibit, 1029, this indicates that the FEFP portion of the funding is 53.8%. Is that correct?
All right, are you on the same table three?
Now I'm on page 2117, which is table five.
Okay, so could you repeat that?
This shows that the FEFP portion is 53.8%, is that correct? In the pie chart?
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Yes.
And we can see back at table two that we were just on, just in terms of the dollar amounts on total revenues, that the state amounts for each year displayed exceeds the Orange County portion, that is, the state portion exceeds the local portion in each of the years displayed, is that on table two, which is on page 2114? And back to table two, on page 2114. And if we can look at the fund balances. It looks to me, Ms. Oropesha, that the unassigned fund balance in the most current year, the fiscal 1415, was 212 million dollars, can you see that?
Yes.
On a total general revenue budget of 1.8 billion?
Yes.
So in excess of 10% of the general revenue is in the fund balance, is that right?
Yes, and I am aware that districts are required to keep a certain amount for like a rainy day fund, so I'm assuming that that is...
All right, so the rainy day...
And the lower, and the lower amounts that you see on the earlier years are more than likely the struggling times when they couldn't set aside as much.
Yeah, but as of today, as of the latest information we've got, it looks like a fund balance that approaches, well, it's in excess of 10% of a 1.8 billion dollar budget, right?
Yes.
May I approach, hon?
You may.
Ms. Oropesha, I hand you exhibit 77 in this trial. And you're aware that the Orange County schools are accredited?
Yes.
And I wanted to focus your attention on a couple of things, and this is on page 3506, which is the Bates number on the bottom right hand. And the statements that are mentioned on that page, first one I wanted to ask you about, which is that Orange County was the co-winner of the 2014 Broad Prize for Urban Education in recognition of rapid improvement in the areas of loan and student academic performance, advanced placement passing and participation rates for Hispanic students, and math proficiency among Hispanic students. Were you aware that the district had won that prize?
Yes.
And that's a significant achievement, isn't it?
Yes.
And it indicates a couple of items down on that same page. For the second year in a row, all 19 traditional high schools made the Washington Post list of America's Most Challenging High Schools, do you see that?
Yes.
That includes your son's school, Boone?
I don't know that.
Okay, that's one of the traditional high schools, isn't it? Boone?
Yes.
And then, in the next couple of items down, it said, "Name the college board's AP district honor roll for three of the last five years for increasing access to advanced placement coursework while simultaneously maintaining or increasing the percentage of students earning scores of three or higher on AP exams." Are you generally aware of the work that Orange has done in improving AP course-taking and outcomes?
Let me look at this. Yes, I am aware that they have devoted more time to taking AP.
Okay. And it indicates in the next line that "The Career and Technical Education has implemented 20 new tech center dual enrollment programs on high school campuses since 2012-13. Students earning industry certifications and other workplace credentials increased from 2,544 in 2012-13 to 7,232 in 1415." You're generally aware of a career and technical education program available in the high schools there in Orange County?
Yes.
And this indicates, if we flip over to page 3510, of that same exhibit. And I'm focused on the second paragraph, which speaks to digital learning and instructional technology available in the schools. Do you see that paragraph?
Yes, I do.
And it indicates that in the last sentence of that paragraph, "Over 50,000 devices have been activated for students with minimal complication, and this effort is an example of the district's success with cross-functional collaboration." Are you familiar with what those 50,000 devices are that have been made available in schools?
No.
Are you aware, Ms. Oropesha, of the trends in the graduation rate in Orange County schools?
Yes.
May I approach, hon?
You may.
Can I backtrack on the digital learning a little bit?
Hold on a second, if I wait this...
Counselor, I have a question. Your attorney can bring that, and I have a question if you want.
Okay. Ms. Oropesha, I've handed you exhibit 1021 in the case, which is an annual report published by the Orange County schools.
Yes, I see that.
You've seen this before?
I have seen a version of this, I don't know if I've seen this exact one.
And turning into that document, and it's Bates number 20980. In the middle kind of column there that speaks to the graduation rates. And it says there that the graduation rate among our 19 traditional high schools was 87%, and now it's compared to 49% in 2000. Were you generally aware of the increasing graduation rates in Orange County schools?
Yes, and I think it's important to note when you're looking at graduation rates that this is like the completion of a four-year cohort group. It doesn't take into account dropouts, it doesn't take into account people who, just through whatever circumstance, fail to continue their high school careers.
Okay, so it's your testimony that the federal graduation rate calculation does not take into account dropouts, is that your testimony?
They don't take into account all of the children who leave public schools.
Okay, and have you studied the federal graduation rate calculation?
No, but I know that.
Okay, I see. This document, turning to page 20981. Notes at the top of the page, in the middle, in the middle column, talks about a school transformation office that provides a centralized support system for a group of 20 schools that demonstrate the greatest needs. The office works to improve teacher instruction, increase parental involvement, and monitor school improvement. Are you aware of the school transformation office in Orange County?
I've heard of it. I'm not intimately aware of it.
All right. It also discusses a minority achievement office under that same section of the annual report, which works to narrow the achievement gap across the districts, and it talks about different initiatives, including third-grade reading acceleration, algebra acceleration, suspension reduction, and programs to increase the number of minority students pursuing careers in education or medical fields. Are you aware of that office and of this work?
I'm aware of it, yes.
Then it talks about, to the right there, creating digital classrooms, and it talked about a pilot program in seven schools where every student was issued a digital device, are you aware of that program?
I'm aware, but my schools were not participants.
Okay. And it goes on to talk about, "Two additional elementary schools started bringing their own device programs that allowed students in the fourth and fifth grades to use their own digital devices, and students who could not afford their own were provided one by the school." Were you aware of that offering in Orange County schools?
No.
This is exhibit 1023, and I apologize in advance for the fact that it's been copied about 400 times, but nevertheless, we'll try to blow it up here on the screen. And I'm interested in the bullet parts of that document. And this document, Ms. Oropesha, is from the Orange County website, and it's a message from the superintendent, is it Dr. Jenkins, is she the superintendent?
Yes.
And this speaks to some of the offerings available in Orange County schools, and it notes that there's this international backglow rate MAGA programs of 10 middle and high schools, you're aware of that program being available in the Orange County schools?
Yes, it's very restricted, limited, but yes, it is available.
At 10 schools. And then dual enrollment programs at all high schools that allow students to earn college credits at no additional cost, that's available, you're aware of that?
Yes.
And then there are MAGA programs in all the school levels that offer customized curriculum in specific areas of interest, and that includes theater and performing arts, international studies, law and finances, science and technology, foreign language, criminal justice, medical technology, veterinary science. Those are some of the offerings available in terms of the MAGA programs there. And it talks about full complement of advanced studies and honors courses offered at middle and high schools. You're aware of that?
Yes.
And career and technical education programs that begin in the middle school level? You're aware of that?
No, that is not happening at Blenker.
Okay. Full offering of online and virtual courses, are you aware of that being available?
Yes, that's made very clear. Yes, that's clear.
To better understand Fund Education Now's positions and their contentions in this lawsuit, you're one of, your organization that you're here to speak on behalf of today is one of the plaintiffs in the lawsuit, right?
Correct.
And as I understand it, Fund Education Now is opposed to charter schools?
We are opposed to the fact that charter schools were initially supposed to be places where innovation took place, and they were supposed to fill a niche that was not provided in the community. And so instead of that, what we have, the thing that we oppose is that we have charter schools that are draining public funds to basically do the same thing. They are not innovating, they're replicating, they're making a duplication of what already exists in the market, and often these charter schools are run by EMOs, education... schools are run by EMOs, education management organizations, or CMO charter management organization that is there strictly to make a profit. So you've got a nonprofit in the front door, and you've got a for-profit in the back door. And the problem with the for-profit backdoor setup is it lacks transparency. It's completely opaque. The board can be comprised of people who may or may not reside in the state. The payment and the profit margin that is being peeled off of this FTE amount is not visible to the public. We have numerous closings of charter schools where, you know, the principal runs off with a $400,000, you know, parachute, and that's public money that we will never reclaim. When charter schools close, it's very difficult for the district to even get their hands on the computers that were purchased by public money. And then if you look at the real estate development situation.
Ms. O'Paisa, I really appreciate all of that.
It's a loss of funding to the public.
What I'd like to ask you, though, is Fund Education Now opposed, does it seek to strike down charter school statutes in the state of Florida? Is that one of the things you're asking for in this lawsuit?
As it exists today and its separate and unequal and unfair status, yes.
Okay, so you'd like to see the charter school portions of the Florida statute struck down? That's one of the things you're asking for in this case?
I don't know that that's what we're asking for specifically. I think we're looking at going back to Article 9, Section 1 of the Constitution, and looking at what comprises a high-quality system of education.
Okay, so, I'm not sure I got your answer. Is it the contention of Fund Education Now that it would like to see the charter school statutes in the state of Florida struck down in this litigation? Is that part of what you're asking for?
What you're asking for is for me to say that this system is, that that's the answer. And the answer to our dilemma falls in a lot of multiple areas, and charter is just one of them.
May I approach her?
You may.
Ms. O'Paisa, I've handed to you a copy of your verified interrogatory responses in this case. You get those up. You recall that you were asked a number of questions in the.
On what page of the interrogative?
It's going to be question interrogatory number nine. If we can bring that up. This will take a moment to bring it up.
And what are the date of these interrogatories? The date of this.
Let's see, they are signed, verified on January 30th, 2014.
May I see where Article 9 or question 9 of this interrogatory impeaches this witness at all?
I don't know. I don't know what question 9 is.
We ought to read it first, Mr. Justice.
I'd be glad to, and.
Let's see if we can get it up.
Yeah, thanks.
If I can see it.
We have a connection.
Okay.
This is on question 9. Page six of the interrogatory answers.
Question?
Identify each Florida statute in legislative enactment that you contend violates Article 9, Section 1A of the Florida Constitution, and describe in detail each fact, each document, the witnesses with knowledge supporting your contention. And what I was asking about, Ms. O'Paisa, was, you know, your position, that is FEN's position in this lawsuit, is that it would like this court to strike down charter school laws, right?
Yes, and what I was referring to is there's multiple things, as you can see, listed in this interrogatory answer, and that's my point that I was asking.
Yeah, I wanted to get to that, too.
Okay.
Which is, it's not just the charter school statutes you want to see stricken in this lawsuit, you want to see all the accountability system statutes struck, too, right?
Yes.
You want to see merit pay struck, that you want that gone.
Yes.
You want the school grading gone.
Yes.
Right, you want standardized testing going.
Yes, in its current form, yes.
And then you want the third grade retention gone.
Yes.
That goes on to the next page. You want all the high school diploma and graduation statutes knocked out, right?
Yes.
And pre-K's out of the case, but you want the Florida Funding Formula and all the related statutes stricken as well, right?
Yes.
So basically, the entire set of these statutes, that's the position that FEN in this lawsuit, that's what it would like to see happen, right?
Yes.
Okay. And so your position in this lawsuit isn't that the state isn't doing enough by way of accountability. You want to get rid of the accountability system that's in place, right?
I think that the problem with these particular items that we're talking about is that this is a dishonest path. All these things are dishonest. They're not good for children. They don't represent a high-quality system of public education as described by the Constitution. So when you say "strike out," it doesn't mean, for example, that I'm an anti-test person. It means that I don't believe it should be used as the weapon of choice to, you know, retain students, to harm schools, to, you know.
To force schools to close, to force schools to hire a charter operator, to force schools to engage in a turnaround. Those are not things that you support.
No, not when you are asking somebody, a parent, to believe in a test that they cannot see, that they cannot know for sure is their child's test score, that is something that is done in a black box, and everybody's expected to believe that that is what it is, particularly when you have a board of education who has historically moved cut scores at will, they have changed 80 percent failures on FCAT rights to 20 percent failures, completely reversing the end result of the test. When you see this blatant data manipulation through test scores in a public forum.
I'm sorry, Ms. O'Paisa.
Then, yes, you have to call into question what these things represent.
Okay, I didn't ask you to call into question. I'm just asking what your position is, and your position seems to be that the accountability system, the school grading system, the requirement of turnaround, all of that is something that you would like this court to strike. You don't support it.
Because it's fundamentally flawed.
Okay, I understand what you think, but I want to understand your position in this lawsuit, which is you don't think, you think the state is doing too much by way of testing, too much by way of school grading, too much by way of accountability. You are not asking this court to let the state do more, to require the state. You're asking that the state retreat from those kinds of things, right?
Correct.
Okay. And to be clear about this, you also are of the view, this is Fund Education Now, the plaintiff in this lawsuit, you are not contending in this lawsuit, as I understand it, that certain groups or classes of students are being denied the opportunity to obtain a higher-quality education, right?
We are concerned about the 2.74 million schoolchildren who are in Florida public education programs in this case. So we are concerned with the entire group, and in that group, there are kids that, you know, come from a variety of different backgrounds.
Okay, so is it your position that, let me move on to that. In terms of the third grade retention program, you understand that there are, this is at the third grade level, you understand that, right?
Yes.
Fund Education Now has not done any studies on the effects of that program, right?
There are numerous pieces of information out there about retaining children and the fact that the third grade retention is actually used as a device to show a fourth grade bump or achievement because you're keeping, sorry, a fourth grade bump in achievement in their test scores. So we're opposed to it because it's not good for kids.
Okay, and Fund Education Now, though, has not done any studies on that issue?
No, we've availed ourselves with the plethora of public knowledge out there about third grade retention, retention of any kind, and the fact that there is a direct connection to this sort of proof that third grade retention works because they've culled out the kids who didn't do well on the test, and so the fourth grade is then filled with people who have either taken third grade twice, or they have eliminated the third graders who are not doing well on the test.
You're aware of good cause exemption that can be used in order to allow the student to move forward to fourth grade at the local level? You're aware of that?
I'm aware of that. I'm also aware of the very stingy nature of the state not really granting those good cause exemptions.
So you don't know what percentage of students who are at Level 1 who would be possibly caught in that retention program? How many of those actually get promoted to fourth grade through good cause?
I don't believe that it's a large percentage.
So you wouldn't know if it's 50 percent or more?
No.
Has Fund Education Now done any studies or analysis on whether charter schools contribute to greater levels of student performance?
No, as I said, the evidence.
Well, that's the answer to my question.
Okay, no.
No, I've done that. Has Fund Education Now done any studies or analysis as to whether the school grading system in Florida has improved educational outcomes?
No.
Has Fund Education Now done any studies or analysis as to whether tying teacher pay to student performance improves student performance?
No.
That's all I have, thank you.
If there are any questions?
No questions, Your Honor.
We direct the camera.
Yes, Your Honor.
Ms. O'Paisa, let's look a little bit past superintendent statements and accreditation reports, and look at how kids in Orange County are doing on our testing. And I first would like to put up Exhibit 4176, and this is the reading demographic report for 2014, and we have, in third grade, for total students, we have 44 percent who are at Level 1 and 2, correct? Can you see that?
Yes. Yeah, I see it.
And by the way, in talking about the Constitution, Constitution has the term "all students" in it, does it not?
Correct, all students living within the borders of the state.
Not just your children, but all students.
Correct.
And that's what Fund Education Now is concerned about, all students.
Yes.
And if you scroll down, please. And in third grade in 2014, we had 59 percent of Black or African-American students who were at Level 1 and 2, correct?
Correct.
And we had 22 percent of Black or African-American students in Orange County who were at Level 3, right?
Correct.
That means 78 percent of that 4,052 students were not at Level 3, right?
Correct.
And if you scroll down, please, on third grade in free or reduced lunch, you have 9,417 students, and 54 percent of them were at 1 or 2, not passing, right?
Correct.
And in moving over in Level 3, you had 23 percent of free or reduced lunch children at Level 3, correct?
Yes.
And for the number of students passing in free or reduced lunch, I believe, was 46 percent? You see that at the far right?
Yes.
Could you come back up? I wanted the court to see, in the passing for Black or African-American students, you had 41 percent passing the FCAT 2, right?
Yes.
You see that?
Yes.
And that's compared to 56 percent, I'm sorry, that's compared to 76 percent of white students passing.
Yes.
And this is in Orange County, right?
Yes.
And if you look at the difference, there's a gap of 35 percent between Black or African-American non-Hispanics and white Hispanic, white non-Hispanics who have passed the FCAT 2 in 2014.
Yes.
Okay. Could you scroll down, please? Well, let's go to Grade 10. Let's take a look at Grade 10, and we don't have an exhibit number.
It's the same exhibit number.
Same exhibit number, I'm sorry. Okay, in Grade 10. Now, in Grade 10, a student must pass the FCAT in order to graduate, correct?
Correct.
And they can take it, I think, again, twice in the 11th grade, and again, twice in the 12th grade, correct?
Yes.
And then they have other ways, if they're not passing, that, like they can take the ACT test.
They can use the concordance score on the ACT or the SAT.
But let's look at how 10th graders are doing in Orange County in 2014. For total of all students, we have, it looks like 46 percent of 13,167 students are at the 1 and 2 level, correct?
Yes.
And we have 54 percent of total students who pass.
Yes.
Come down to the white, non-Hispanic 2014, and in 2014, you had 74 percent of white, non-Hispanic children who passed the FCAT 2 10th grade test, correct?
Yes.
And you had 26 percent of white, non-Hispanics who were 1 and 2s, right?
Yes.
And then come on down to Black or African-American, non-Hispanic. And for that, we have 64 percent who are. children did not, that, that passed the FCAT 10, correct?
Yes.
Come on down and, and we could look if we want to go back up. And let's look at that 36% in comparison to the white, non-Hispanic. There is a 8, 38% gap in Orange County in 2014 between African-American students and white students passing the 10th grade FCAT, right?
Yes. There it is.
And come on down and let's look at free and reduced lunch. And by the way, for each of these, you can take that percentage. It tells us the number of students involved, and that would give us the total population of students. But come down to 10th grade and free or reduced lunch. There, we had 7,147 students and we had 58% who did not pass the FCAT 10, too, right?
Yes.
And we had 42% of free or reduced lunch kids who passed, correct?
Yes.
And coming back up to ELL. In ELL, we had 85% who were 1 and 2, and we had 15% of ELL kids in 2014 who passed the FCAT 2 10th grade test, right?
Yes.
If we would go to Exhibit 4109, and this was all reading, now let's go to math. In this Exhibit 4109, let's first look at Grade 3. We had a total in Grade 3 in math for total students, we had 58% who passed and we had 53%, I'm sorry, we had 40, 41% who were 1 and 2s, correct?
Yes.
And in Black or African-American kids in 10th grade, we had 54% 1 and 2s and we had 45% who passed, right?
Yes.
So in math, there was a 13-point gap between Black or African-American students and the, the total students, right?
Right.
And these results all come about in spite of all the accreditation reports and in spite of all the superintendent's reports and in spite of what's available to Orange County kids. This is how they're doing on the tests the state has in order to see how they're performing, right?
Yes.
Let's go to, in 4109, in 2014, we had in math, we had 65% not at 1 and 2s, not passing...
What grade level?
This is grade level 10, Your Honor.
This is 8.
I mean, 8, Your Honor. We had 36% of Black or African-American kids who did not, who passed the FCAT 8th grade, correct?
Yes.
And come on down, if you would. Looking at free or reduced lunch, we had 57% who were 1 and 2s and we had 43% who passed the FCAT in 8th grade, right?
Yes.
And let's look at the difference between free or reduced lunch and the white students. We got 43% and 72%. So we have a, 29-point difference between those two...
Yes.
Groups. And then we have the ELL. But let's move on and have the court see the 10th grade. This is not 10th grade on this. Okay. Let's go to, we're at Grade 8. Let's look at ELL. That's what I had left out. And Hispanic. Again, all below what white students are doing in school. In 8th grade for ELL, we had 78% 1 and 2s and we had 22% passing, correct?
Yes.
Now, and, and these are the kids that Fund Education Now are concerned about?
Yes. We're very concerned about that discrepancy and what happens to these children.
Now, Orange County has a sales tax for capital, right?
Yes.
And they have a 1 mil for operating?
Yes.
And could you bring up 1950, please? Now, this is the differentiated accountability report for 2015-16. And were you aware that in Orange County, there are 24 schools in differentiated accountability?
Yes.
And differentiated accountability means that these are D and F schools, right?
Yes.
Now, lastly, when Mr. Castani was talking to you on how you want to abolish this, you want to abolish that, what your concern is, is, or Fund Education's concern is, is that the Constitution be complied with, right?
Correct.
And if there needs to be corrections, if they need to bring things in line with the Constitution, that's what you really want to see happen.
Yes. We don't feel that that has ever really been done in the state.
Thank you.
Any recollection of that, that, um, that couple there? Ms. Orpeza, we spent a good deal of time going through these FCAT 2O results, but your organization in this lawsuit wants to get rid of the FCAT and the standardized testing, right?
We would like to see a different way of assessing students.
So all of these results we just went through, if you had your way, we wouldn't have these standardized tests at all, right?
These results prove the inequities that are happening when we take these tests and we apply them like a hard yardstick on the students.
You don't think they're reliable? You don't think they're useful? You don't think we should even have them? That's what you said in your interrogatory answers, right?
When the data's being manipulated and cut scores can be moved at will, they are not reliable or valid.
So in your view, these don't really tell us much of anything?
They tell us that the state is failing the students.
Well, you want those standardized tests to be removed. That's your position in this lawsuit.
We would like the standardized tests to be fair and diagnostic, not harsh and unfair.
And your organization, that you're here to speak on behalf, that's the plaintiff here in this case, has done no studies on not only student achievement, but any relationship between student achievement and funding, right?
As I mentioned, there's much information, public information out there that speaks to all of this, that we're all able to read.
Well, I understand what you can read, but I'm asking whether your organization has done any such studies linking any of these results that we just saw and funding? You've not done that work, no, right?
No.
Okay. Now, I'm still not clear on the position of FEN with respect to the different groups. Is it the position of FEN that all students are being denied a high-quality education in Florida, or is it these groups that are scoring at above a 3?
The net effect is that all children are being denied a high-quality public education according to the demands of the Constitution, Article 9, Section 1.
Okay. So even students that scored Level 5, they're not getting a high-quality education? Is that your position?
Correct.
Okay. So, so nobody's getting a high-quality education in the state of Florida at all?
If, as long as, once this analysis, analysis can be done to see if the public education school system is any way in a reflection of the paramount duty of the state legislature, no.
Okay. So, thank you.
No, it is not.
I think I see it. Thanks.
Ms. Bartle, any questions?
No questions, Your Honor.
Do you have anything further of this witness?
No, Your Honor.
Ms. Orpeza, thank you very much for your testimony, and we'll go back to this.